Good evening, everyone. This is, today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, can you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster, the Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board, and this meeting is being recorded by AP TV. And I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting. Thank you. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter is absent. Natalie Passerini is absent. John Hall is absent. Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right. No housekeeping issues right now, so we'll go right into the applications. 1002 Sunset Avenue, Dr. Cagle and Lane Cagle. I believe I said that right. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
Is it Dr. Cagle?
That is true, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Cagle's gonna start for us this evening.
Absolutely. All right, we have to wait for Jack to swear your name.
Okay.
Paul Joseph Cagle, P-A-U-L. Middle name Joseph, J-O-S-E-P-H. Last name Cagle, C-A-G-L.
I do.
Please state your names to the record and spell it.
Jonathan Wolf, Architect.
Okay. Do you need to swear my name also?
Uh, yeah.
Got you.
You say it again. Swear affirm, testimony about this matter, two to three.
I do.
Please state your names to the record and spell it.
Jonathan Wolf, W-O-L-F-P. Jonathan Wolf, Architect and Design.
Typically, we go one at a time, so we don't get too confused. We can't have two witnesses speaking at once. You're a licensed architect, you stated.
I am indeed, yeah. For about 10 years, yeah, and I've presented for the Board on a handful of occasions.
And your license is currently good standing?
In good standing, yeah, in New Jersey and some other states as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jack.
Okay.
All right. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Doctor?
Okay, yeah, so we are proposing the addition of a garage to 1002 Sunset. I think those plans are up, and we have a picture here.
Yeah, let's have that marked, this is important. Feel my way.
Sir, you prepared those plans?
I have, yes.
And they're sealed by you?
They are sealed. This set is not sealed. It's identical, though, to the set that we submitted. This is just sort of a prop.
Can you tell me the date when you prepared those plans?
I can indeed. They're dated 31 July 2025.
Okay, Doctor, proceed.
Absolutely. So we'd like to add a 492-foot structure. I believe there are three variances that we'd be addressing. So one is the side yard, one is the front setback, and one is the total percent coverage or building, sorry, max building coverage.
Do you have any design exceptions as well?
Yes.
We do, and I can speak to those, yeah.
Yes.
These are the designs.
Are you a planner?
I'm not.
Okay. You gotta be careful. Okay?
Uh, yeah, I think that's the entirety.
Okay, you gotta tell us why you know.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so, yeah, so we obviously love it here and love the home. We'd like to add the addition of a garage for parking and storage, as well as just vehicle security. So the ideal aspect of this here would be to put a garage in that looks like it was originally with the home, so matching the roofline, matching sort of the front setbacks. This doesn't look like it was necessarily added on, but was part of the original design. And that's sort of the style of the garage here. So the reason for the side yard is that that really gets to the minimum width for a two-car garage. If we bring that within the next couple of feet, it sort of becomes sort of unusable as a two-car garage. It becomes a little less. It's like a one and three-quarter garage. For the initial front setback, that was actually something that we had changed based on some of the initial feedback. Originally, we had it at eight inches back, which I do think aesthetically is pleasing, but I respect what the sort of Board had suggested, where we need at least, you know, the length of a car, the space for a car to be placed in the driveway. And so we moved that back a full 20 feet, so that we'd have 20 feet of space for a car to be able to park and not block the sidewalk, or have no interference with transverses, but probably to the beach. And then the percent coverage was just respectful, sort of bringing this to an aesthetic portion with the back of the house.
Why don't you tell us about the property, the way it is now?
Yeah, sure. So right now, it's a single-family home. I have the high school across the street from me, and then I have a neighbor to the left, kind of a similar structure of home, and a neighbor to the right. There's a fairly significant sort of space between the neighbor to my right, who'd be building this garage, and myself, and then I have one neighbor behind me.
Could you just say east and west instead of?
Uh, yeah, sure. Okay. So there, yeah, so there is a house to the east and the west of me, and that would be, uh, obviously, the beach, and then, let's see, and then we have the, sorry, and then we have the high school to the north, and one neighbor to the south.
Okay, and so why do you want the garage where you're proposing?
Uh, so right now, that's sort of the natural place where we're parking the cars, and that would be, it would fit with the flow of the home, and I think it would aesthetically look appropriate.
And why can't it be pushed back further so it complies?
So a couple of reasons for the initial one. I think if we kind of look at the design of the house, the front of the house really kind of has this little jut that sort of sticks out there, and my concern is setting it back the full five feet is just, you know, sort of something that's not aesthetically going to look good with the overall flow of the home. It would really not match, or so to speak, where the house is now, and I think we do have some pictures, I believe, is kind of what the front of the house looks like. And it really is just two little windows in the front of the house there, where it would sort of make that a focal point, which I don't really think that would be ideal to make that central aspect a focal point of the house.
But there's enough room. You're saying it's just an aesthetic thing?
Aesthetically, I think it would, yeah, I think it would look bad.
But you have the room.
Uh, yeah, of course, if it moved back another five feet. One of the downsides of moving it back another two feet as well is keeping the size of the garage. If we look at where the air conditioning units are listed, sort of in the poster aspect of the house, the back of the house, those are the windows to the kitchen. And so if we move the garage back, that does block some of the windows in the kitchen as well. So I think it would have a little less ideal sort of lighting and space for the back of the house.
And is the garage longer than the standard, you know, length of a car?
It's ideally planned for storage for things like bicycles. I have two children now, so the plan would be to have it be car storage and sort of storage for things like that, yes.
Are you gonna walk us through the plans?
I will, yeah.
Okay, wait.
Currently, you park your cars just on the driveway?
Yeah, they're like, physically would be where this garage is right now. Yeah.
And do you park them stacked, or are they side by side?
Basically, they'd be identical to where this garage is. They'd be side by side, so they would be, it would almost just be put in a garage around where the house, the cars are now.
So you park your cars?
Side by side.
Side by?
Side by side. Yeah.
You planning to replace your driveway or your concrete apron, or are you gonna try to do a lot of everything else?
Um, I think the driveway is a bit old. I would probably replace it, yes. Ideally, it would be at the same time.
And that would be asphalt, is what it is?
Asphalt, yeah. Like, we just match what we have now. Yeah.
Any further questions for Dr. Cagle? Board professionals? Anybody in the public who would like to ask Dr. Cagle any questions regarding his testimony? All right, seeing none, please proceed. Thank you, Dr. Cagle.
My name's Jonathan Wolf. I'm the architect. Been working with the Cagles on some improvements to their site and the house. I'm just gonna walk you through the proposed addition. Size-wise, it's a fairly standard, right?
I know, there you got to.
It's a fairly standard two-car garage.
Did you go through it on your plans?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. So here on the site plan, you can see a 492 proposed square feet.
So this is a two-car garage?
It is a two-car garage, and fairly modesty size for a two-car garage, attached at 20 feet by 24 feet.
And it's attached to the property?
It's attached to the house, yeah, to the expansion of the principal structure.
And setback only two feet?
Setback two and two feet five inches, all over the front setback, and that was just two.
And there's, you know, the ordinance calls for it five feet.
And I had presented that to the Cagle, and we discussed that, and we decided that it was important enough to propose the two and a half feet. It really, I think...
And that's because it might block the kitchen windows, is that correct?
That's, yeah, the main thing. It would sort of begin to encroach on these kitchen windows.
And there's no way to set the garage further back on the property?
Uh, behind altogether, sort of?
Yes.
The driveway?
Yes, and make it a detached garage.
So the way the site is now, really, sort of the front and side are pretty, just exclusively grass, and really, their sort of patio entertaining space is sort of here behind the garage. As I understand, that's probably the most used sort of outdoor entertaining space you have, so it's also...
But it is possible to place it further back?
It would be possible. Not at all for the owners, but I think, yeah, it would be possible to move it back, yeah.
Because generally, that's what we expect the garages to be, set further back, out of the view, not in line with the house.
Yeah.
Do you understand that, Mr. Wolf?
I do indeed, I do indeed. It's a slightly short site in that it's only 80 feet in depth, so it's a little bit of a shortened site. It's still compliant in its square footage in this area, but at 80 feet, you know, it's fairly short. I think if we were to set the garage back, attached or detached, really, you sort of have to dedicate, I mean, as we've done in the past, quite a bit of space in the driveway, you know, and more asphalt, rather than the potential for entertaining space and patio behind the garage.
But which is standard in Asbury Park.
Sorry?
Which is, it's very common in Asbury Park, the majority of houses have these very long driveways or...
Sure, show me the garage all the way in the back, yeah, yeah.
And they would have the space on the side of the house.
So this side, we weren't, we didn't look at the east side of the house as a potential opportunity for the garage. The idea was to...
No, not as a garage, as you're saying, they're gonna lose entertainment space, but they have what appears to be a fairly large yard to the side.
They do, yeah.
What's the square footage on that, or what are the dimensions, if you have right there?
On the side lot here?
Yeah, just on the side.
This actually is the adjacent lot. I think it's 58, 30 to the end, 58, 13 feet. Here I have, it's about 16 and a half feet from the side of the house to our property.
Can you go to the next page? I just, I wanted to ask you a question regarding the windows. So right where your hand is where the windows are in the kitchen?
Yeah.
So you have two feet. You have a measurement of two feet. Is that from the corner of the house to the end of the garage right now?
Yes.
So from the end of the garage right there, as that's two feet, how much, how many feet is it from the end of the garage to where that first window starts in the kitchen?
The proposed end of the garage?
Correct.
I suppose we have, you know, another two feet inches, about two and a half, just based on...
So almost, so almost three feet. So it's already back two feet, and the ordinance says five feet.
I'd say maybe, you know, to this jam, maybe two feet, maybe another two feet to that.
So almost four feet altogether?
Almost four feet to the window, yes, from that proposal.
So, so the way it sits right now, it's back two feet from the house, correct? In the front?
The way it's...
No, I'm sorry, in the front, you've moved the garage back two feet from the house lot.
So, yeah, we moved this back, I think probably the existing is four, moved it back two, and now we're sort of left with two as the...
Yeah, no, I'm saying in the, in the front of the house.
Okay, yeah.
So you, you've moved the garage back two feet from the corner of the house right there?
Right, two and a half, yeah.
Right? The ordinance is five feet.
Yeah.
So we've already got two feet.
We've got two and a half, two sixths.
We're close, yeah.
Right, so just bear with me a minute, I know it's painful. So now, let's go back to the back.
Yeah.
So you've got two feet there, and then you've got another two conservatively before you get to that window jam.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's four right there, we only need three. Five. So, right, but I'm taking the two and a half. Okay. So we only needed another three, so without blocking the windows, as, which is a concern for the doctor, I totally get that, it appears that you could move the garage back another three feet, be in compliance with the ordinance of five, and not block those windows.
I think we blocked the window by a foot in that case.
And, if I may interject, you have a 24-foot structure here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and what's standard for a garage?
Minimum would be 20, yes.
Minimum's 18, but standard is 20, so you have an additional four feet for storage and stuff in there.
Uh-huh. We do, yeah.
I would like to see you comply with the, with the five-foot setback, as I think the Board is alluding to. Yeah, this is, this is a pretty good-sized garage.
It is.
It's a very good-sized garage. You have, you have four feet to work with, just with the interior dimensions.
Right.
I'd like to see you comply with that, if possible. And I think in addition to what, what my colleague just said, you have four feet within the structure, and it appears you have another, conservatively, at least another two feet to play with.
Right.
And again, we only need three more feet. You've already moved it back two, so I think...
So you think that would really help our application?
Well, I think that would make it compliant with the ordinance, and I think...
It would eliminate...
The need for...
A variance, I believe, in one of the...
So for that, only for that?
Correct. For that, right, for that.
Right, and it would eliminate one of the design exceptions. Paul, is that something that you would be interested in pursuing? Is that the conversation, actually, I mean, is it relevant if we agree to something like that in this context?
It helps your application, absolutely, Mr. Wolf, so...
So, okay, is that something?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, not in a hurry. I mean, that's one. It's a garage, so it's a, you know, it's a luxury, not a need. You know, I do genuinely have some concerns. I really would like, sort of would like it to look like it was meant to be with the home, and not like it was a secondary add-on, so I probably would need to look at it and scale it out. I do just have genuine concerns that setting it back a significant number is just gonna make it look like a garage I built onto it and not part of the original house.
Let me stop you there. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't, if I may, I don't think it's a significant...
Yeah.
I don't think you're moving it back a significant, we're talking three feet, number one.
Yeah.
So number two, I think we would all like to see what it looks like on a drawing before this, not to speak for the rest of the Board, before myself, I'd like to see a plan before I voted on it. But I want to go on the record that three feet, in my opinion, is not a significant change, and I don't think you, to your one concern for doing this, of blocking those windows, I don't think, I don't think it affects that. If a garage is what you're looking for, blocking the window potentially a foot, if even that, or not even sure.
Yeah, they testified that the dimensions, they have the roof.
Right.
It's an aesthetic choice. And I'm just going to reiterate, the design of this house, in a normal pattern of development in the city, this house never would have had an attached garage on the side in the front, right? That's, that's not a classical, typical architectural design for what we have in the city. It would be a detached garage in the back of the lot.
This is what I stated before.
If it was attached, it would be nearly set back farther, and it would probably only be a one, one car.
Right.
That would be the original design. If you're looking to make this property back to its original design, that, that would be what you would do. The ordinance allows for this, so that's why we're having this conversation, but...
So can I ask a question about, before we give up on this garage, even just the pushing it back, if we were willing to concede in any way to have it not always pushed back?
Well, the ordinance allows that now. You can build a garage.
To the five.
You have to five, so we can't deny that if the ordinance allows that.
So, but now, we have no side yard setback on the west side.
The side yard's a problem for me, and we haven't gotten there yet, yeah.
Right, so I was going to take it, because I'm now, I'm thinking, what is a very large garage that you want to put in for two cars and storage? And so you're, you're pushing back on us about the couple of feet, but we have this whole very large garage that we need to address, and what it's done to the neighboring property, the setback on that side, so...
I can only ask, how does Dr. Cagle feel at this point? You're hearing the Board's objections, right, to...
Yeah, no, I mean, my goal here is to build what I believe to be an aesthetic and pleasing structure. I think it's a high-traffic street. I think a lot of people go down Sunset to get to the beach. I think that this, you know, is also the house, I am the house centered across from the high school, which I think makes me probably one of the most high-traffic homes probably in the city, given the number of buses and things that go there. My goal really is aesthetics. I mean, I, I mean, I get that, you know, that may not comply particularly with the historic tradition of the town. I do think it would look good specifically with this design queue, and I think, you know, John did a great job of sort of making a design that melded well with the rooflines and sort of flowed well with the overall design of the house. I do respect that the history of the town was one-car, sort of attached garages. I mean, I do think this would look good, and I, you know, it's something I have to look at every day, obviously, so it's something that I would want to be visually pleasing before I would, you know, obviously, agree to go forth with it. I mean, I absolutely can take a look at, you know, setting it back a little bit, I just, I just have some concerns that just, again, just sort of brings this on, maybe un-aesthetic sort of central portion of your house out as like the most central focal point.
I would ask again, did you consider building a two-car garage in the back of the house?
Yeah, I, again, I think if you're gonna say valuable space, I think entertaining space in the back is probably more valuable than parking space, so I think if I had to do one or the other, I probably wouldn't give up the entertaining space for parking space and parking in the same space now. I was hoping to repurpose that same space with just a garage, given the cars reside there currently.
In that, in that same line of thinking, that, did you consider just a one-car garage?
I did.
Same depth, so you still have the storage, and you just stack the cars?
You can't, you can't stack, unfortunately.
No, no, I mean, by stack is one is in the garage and one is in the driveway.
I mean, so the trouble with it then is, right now, I can park one car next to each other. If I do a one-car garage, by just the very nature of having the walls be slightly thicker, and the one-car garage is gonna be a little bit wider, it actually eliminates the parking spot, so I really can't park next to it. I'd be parking into my neighbor's yard.
That's not true.
Really? Because it would be probably a 15-foot structure or a 12-foot, I don't know, two wide?
But it would give you the garage.
I was recently designing a 12-foot wide one garage.
Yeah, I mean, and I have, I have about 20 there, so, I mean, I guess theoretically it would be close, but yeah, it would be a very tight space on the side, sure.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Again, you don't have a garage now.
I do not have a garage now, no.
Right? It would be giving you a one-car garage with storage.
Sure.
Albeit not the perfect setup, but unfortunately, your lot doesn't allow for, you know, what you're, what you're proposing.
Okay.
That's why I...
Yeah.
Mr. Wolf, did you ever do a design where you tried to fit this in the back, and you didn't need the side yard setback?
Like a detached condition?
Right.
We have, yeah, in other municipalities as well.
So you think you could fit that, you could fit a detached, same size, and not, and not have the side yard?
I think we can. I think, though, we're awfully close to, to compliance, you know? I think with some adjustment, we could get to the point where...
In the sense that you could give us the five-feet setback?
In the sense that if we worked together, and if it was, I mean, it has to be minimal, obviously, to the owner, and we've discussed the variances in detail, and, you know, I've made suggestions about ways of alleviating some of it, but I think that we could, I'm certain that we could bring everything down such that it wouldn't require any variances. What that would look like in the end, as far as, I think it would be a one-car garage with storage, but I think we could eliminate the side setback condition, conflict. I think we could eliminate the building coverage condition, which actually, Paul didn't mention it, we had previously proposed a fairly large expansion of the existing front porch to wrap around the east side of the home, similar to the property to the east, and we decided that the extra building coverage that that represented was gonna be difficult to defend, and that the garage was really the priority, and that we should focus on the garage. So that's based on feedback from zoning. We went back to the drawing board, made some adjustments, and here we are, aware of what we're asking for, aware, you know, that it's, that there are, you know, multiple variances at play here. But I think it's, you know, a matter of, yeah, just determining what's, what you guys feel reasonable coming back with.
You also have to remember, there's legal criteria that you have to establish for granting the variance.
Sure.
Right now, everything is something creative.
Sure, right.
You're telling me, and which I understand, you're a layperson in terms of this field, that, you know, you have, you aesthetically want to do something. That's not the basis for granting the variance.
Okay.
And if the Board can, it has an obligation to reduce the quantity of variances, and still try and do what they can for the applicant.
Yeah.
But if there's, there's an opportunity to not have any variances for an applicant, the Board should certainly restore them, and that's the law. So that's the situation that you have.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just say, unless you, unless you understand the criteria for variance, it's more than what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, and as the architect, right, I'm not a planner, but I have been an architect long enough to know sort of the requirements and the criteria for the C2 variance that we would be looking for, and we would be prepared to, you know, address those criteria and sort of...
He would be prepared. You can...
I'm not, right, as, as, absolutely. Dr. Cagle would be prepared to address the, not just the feasibility, but the, you know, the appropriateness of sort of what we're proposing, and does it constitute sort of any, you know, does it present any sort of negative consequences to the...
The positive and negative criteria, and from the comments of the Board, I think you have an idea of where they're looking and what to...
Uh-huh. Yep. Thank you.
How would you like to proceed at this point, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Dr. Cagle?
Um, where do we stand on the other variances?
We cannot discuss the other variances until we get to some kind of conclusion regarding the overall design of the...
Sure.
Well, so, just to kind of lay a little groundwork, there is a coverage variance...
Right.
Which is small, not very small, coverage from the requirement, and obviously, reducing the size of the garage to a one-car garage would be enough of a reduction to bring that
How would you like to proceed at this point, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Dr. Cagle?
Um, where do we stand on the other variances?
We, we cannot discuss the other variances until we get to some kind of conclusion regarding the overall design of-
Sure.
Well, so just to kind of lay a little groundwork, there is a, um, coverage variance.
Right.
Which is, uh, small, not very small, overage from the requirement. And, um, obviously, reducing the size of the garage to a one-car garage would be enough of a reduction to bring that into compliance. Um, and then there's the side yard setback. Again, a one-car garage would become, uh, would be able to fit, provide the adequate side yard setback and still have a, a flat stall next to the garage and still be on the property. Um, without increasing, you know, the building coverage of periscope and all those things. Um, and, and then, um, obviously, increasing the setback gets us out of that design exception and the framework setback variance.
So as many variances as you can eliminate, Mr. Wolf, works in your favor.
And if you can eliminate all of them, you won't have to come back here.
Back here, yeah, yeah. And honestly, I, I do see a solution. As, as Ms. Biller was saying, I do see a solution that would eliminate, um, all three of the variances. Um, but it, you know, if it's not something that the Cagles are interested in pursuing, then, you know, so, yeah, it's-
Well, except that if they still want to pursue the design that has all those variances.
Right.
They have to be prepared to satisfy the positive and negative criteria for C2 variance.
Sure, sure.
And you don't have an undersized lot. I get that you have existing structures and, you know, you can't move the house, but you've already testified to the fact that, you know-
I think I've already covered this.
The, sorry, the, you know, the patio is not completely, yeah. So, yeah, so if you want to go back and, and reconsider the design and then we can reserve a space at another meeting? If they need it?
If they need it.
And if I could also add one more thing, not to jump in, but, uh, you do have to give us some stormwater control on the side.
Okay.
So typically, we'd be looking for, collect the water on the new roof.
Okay.
And get it into some type of seepage system.
The area of the new roof has to be accounted for.
Me and Jim will have to give you some idea of where that's going to be.
A little recharge.
Yeah. It's not anything.
Yeah, yeah.
A new driveway, as I look at it, in full sight, uh, on the east side, you had a fan now to pick up the garage door. On the west side, it just goes straight back. Um, if you go to a one-car garage and that's, my question goes away. If you're going to come back with a two-car garage again.
Okay.
You gotta make your driveway wide enough to get cars in and out. So right now, it's not.
So, right.
It uses your lot coverage when you, when you do that. So however you look at it.
So both the cars really should go straight in? Okay. Thank you. The tricky one's that side setback to me. I think everyone, you know, um, I think, you know, the five feet we can work with. Just be, yeah, I guess we want to hear the board's feedback on the side setback.
I think your instinct is correct, though.
Yeah, I think that's a tough one.
Okay.
Um, anything else for the board?
Both of us, again, spoke a lot, so we should reopen it.
All right, I'll, I'll reopen it to the public. Does anybody wish to ask any questions regarding either testimony from Mr. Wolf or Dr. Cagle? Seeing none, we'll go on and proceed to picking another date? Or what would you like, how would you like to proceed, Mr. Wolf, Dr. Cagle?
Um, just so I understand, I mean, just so I get the tenor, this is my first attempt at doing this, so thank you for humoring me, all of you. Um, I would, you know, just taking the tenor of this and maybe it's incorrect, but it would sound like the direction of change would need to be to bring this down to theoretically a one-car garage in order to have it actually be approved. Am I correct in that?
Well, you need to watch.
You need to watch.
As, as your architect, I should advise, I think that a one-car garage, not, you know, it may not be what you want, but I think we can eliminate each of those variance requirements, side setback, building coverage.
And you may not need to come back.
And that would, right, as much as, yeah.
So.
So if we can balance those two things, the city's requirements and what you guys need.
Sure.
That's where we need to be.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Date during the interim, if you change the plans and you don't need the variances, you let the board secretary know the case can be dismissed. And then you can proceed to get your building plans approved.
Okay, so we could theoretically still sort of carry in a way?
Well, we'll carry it to a date certain.
Okay.
Without further notice required, making it go through all that expense.
Thank you.
But in the interim, if, if you decide to pare it down, redesign and eradicate the variances and design exception, we, we would have no jurisdiction, you would not have to be.
Understood, understood.
And then you just let us know and we'll take you off the list.
Okay, that's clear.
So what do we have available, Marie?
We would be looking at-
Twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six dates.
Right, so we, we really don't have dates approved yet for twenty twenty-six.
What's our estimation?
We have, we have a preliminary list that went to-
Right, but that hasn't been approved by, or adopted by the board yet, so.
Do we have any other zoning board meetings next month and the month after? May, November, December?
So.
Unfortunately, they're already booked.
Yeah, but if, if, you can always carry.
And carry it again, okay.
My hand will know the date, so.
Okay.
So the, the question-
Magic of lawyering, let's, let's, let's carry it.
November eighteenth is the next date.
Okay. Will we know our dates in January by then? Will we know our dates in January and beyond?
Uh, no, because they don't get approved till January.
Okay, well, how about, well, we, you know, we'll have to carry it and carry it to, carry it to that date.
That's too early for you to have your plans and plans.
Yeah, December ninth is-
Right, with two weeks to get it submitted.
December ninth would be the last, the last meeting of two thousand twenty-five. We do have, we do have two applicants already on that date, but obviously if they need to carry, then it's not gonna-
Well, we could do the, the second application for January, the, what is it, the twenty-seventh, Marie, we have a meeting?
It's true, we have-
That's already been, um, noted for.
January twenty-seven of two thousand-
Yeah.
Put it out.
So January twenty-seventh?
Without further notice.
Agreeable.
All right, so I make a motion to carry one thousand and two Sunset Avenue to January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-six, without further notice.
And one, one addition to that, if I'm going to be able, you will require to move again, approve the application for the next round of days of submission.
Okay.
Waive the time at which that we have to-
That's right, we need to submit that waiver, okay.
So, so amended.
Marie, January twenty-seventh?
That would be, uh, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-six. Chris made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Wendy Glassman?
Yeah.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
John Scully?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank the board.
All right, next application, seven oh five Grand Avenue.
Where's Jerk?
Bye, Jerry. Happy Halloween.
Is he coming back? Is he going to see you?
Yeah. We'll see you guys.
Because it's, uh, five fifteen, six ten.
If I didn't say at the beginning of the other application, I think there's a few other instances and they were improper.
Thank you, Jack.
So we do have jurisdiction here.
How about this one?
Same thing.
Okay.
I've looked at everything. It's a good order. We certainly do have jurisdiction to proceed in this application as well as the last one.
All right, Mr. Scarea, is that correct?
Scarea, yes, thank you. I just have pictures on my computer. I was going to do a quick introduction.
Go right ahead.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. Uh, good evening. My name is Richard Scarea. I'm a partner of law from Hall, Neiman &amp; Wright. I represent the applicant, Dale Fior. Uh, this is the owner of the property for this application. Uh, just wanted to give a very quick introduction, so I tell the board what this is about. The applicant, um, previously had a conforming six-foot fence on the property in the line with the neighbor's property. Uh, it's not by a street. Uh, in September of twenty twenty-four, the applicant installed a two-and-a-half-foot approximate, uh, length lattice on top of the six-foot fence to gain privacy from a new building that was built, uh, on five oh seven Soul Avenue. Uh, the new building had lights that shined onto his property and also there was no privacy there. The applicant didn't realize they needed a, a variance, uh, for that here. Actually, the planner said a design exception for this, uh, so he got a notice of violation. So he's here before the board requesting approval for the two-and-a-half-foot, uh, uh, lattice to be on the six-foot fence here. We have a couple exhibits here, uh, to show, including pictures. I have Mr. Fior, the owner of the property, testify. And all notices as the board attorney stated, uh, have been sent out. So unless any further process, we're both ready for my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, do you want to swear in, Mr. Fior?
Please, I swear again. Salute and swear of honor, pardon. This is about to give this matter, you should, I hope you can have a proper attitude.
I do.
You state your name for the record.
Dale Fior.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fior, are you the owner of the property?
I am.
Okay, and what's the property address?
Seven oh five Grand Avenue.
Are you the only owner of the property?
I am.
And how long have you lived at the property?
Uh, it was purchased in, uh, April of two thousand twelve, thirteen, sorry.
Okay, and can you describe the structure of the building from which you live in?
Yes, um, the building, um, many in town know it as Edward's Beauty Salon.
You're going to show that, let's mark.
Eight one.
Eight one, yes, for this exhibit.
Edward's Beauty Salon was erected in approximately nineteen thirty. Uh, it follows the same Art Deco style as the, uh, convention hall and the carousel. Um, it is, uh, that lot, that, that block at one time in Asbury was primarily commercial. Uh, where the Albanian townhouse homes are now was a paint factory. Uh, the VFW building was next to me. Now it's the alphabet school and the beauty salon. The house next to me was doctors' offices, so that section of-
Careful.
Huh?
That wasn't the VFW, it was the USO.
A USO? Oh, okay, or she told me it was the VFW, Esther. Okay.
When I was a youngster, that was the USO.
Well, okay.
I get it.
You, so you know it to, you know that when it was, Edward's, when it was a salon. Many people come by and, and tell me that they, their grandparents were, got their hair done, or grandmas and all, so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I mean, it's formerly a commercial.
So, no, what, what I'm trying to explain is that, uh, the board planner just mentioned in her review that it was a non-conforming property and I'm just giving you insight as to why it's non-conforming. It was a, it is a commercial building that has been retrofitted into a residence.
And, um, do you have a fence, uh, on the back of this, uh, property that you prefer?
I do.
And did you obtain the zoning permit for the fence?
I did.
And I have a bunch of copies of this, but if I can mark as A2, the zoning.
Okay, zoning permit?
Uh, no, you want me to hand it up here or just put it here? This is the zoning permit for the initial fence. Thank you.
For the initial six-foot fence.
The initial six-foot fence, that's correct, yes. And where did you obtain the zoning permit, uh, for the six-foot fence?
In, um, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
It replaced another fence that was there.
And again, and, and so you needed to replace another fence that was initially there?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and then after that, um, there had come a time, and the fence is six feet, correct? The, the previous fence, when you installed it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there had come a time when you added, um, a trellis on top of the six-foot fence?
Yes, so.
And, um, we have, I just want to show the invoice for that, um, as a free, thank you, I'm sorry. And when did you, um, put the, uh, trellis on top of the fence?
Uh, that would have been approximately, uh, August of twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, you said?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, thank you. Yes. And why did you install a trellis on top of the existing six-foot fence?
Well, the five oh seven Sewell house was built in, uh, it began in twenty twenty, was completed, uh, uh, I, I don't know, the, the groundbreaking was a little later than that, probably twenty twenty-three. Uh, the house was, I believe, completed and occupied somewhere around June of twenty twenty-four. Uh, once the house was occupied, um, I became aware, well, even when it was being built, I saw the Juliet balcony, how close it was to my house and the angle on which it is, second floor, about forty feet away, is, it's pretty close. We have pictures.
Okay.
Uh, at night, when the lights are on, it's literally like I'm on a stage back there. It's bright.
All right, so let's go through some pictures, uh, so we can show the board. Um, and I have, I don't know if you want to mark all the pictures, or the USB is one.
Before you do that, let me swear in my planner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'll just swear a testament, swear a far testimony about to give this matter the truth, the truth and the information.
Thank you.
You state your name for the record, do you feel the issue with the board?
Tom Oliver, board planner.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry about that. Uh, and we have a, a bunch of pictures in a slideshow, which I'm going to go through with the client. I don't know if you want to mark the whole set as, as A4 or go through each one.
Why don't you make A4 consisting of how many pictures?
It is a total of twenty-five pictures.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I'm going to show what is the first picture. Uh, this is actually from the, uh, picture, uh, mirrors the board planner's, uh, picture. Uh, is this an aerial photo of your property?
Yes, it is.
Oh, and the, your property is within the square yellow rectangle?
That's correct.
Can you tell the board where the fence is on the property, uh, in relation to that square?
Um, it is at the back. Most of it runs along the length of their garage. The white structure roof at the back. You see where the yellow line, the yellow, the, uh, westerly yellow line? That, that square in the back is the five oh seven Sewell garage.
So you're looking at, you're looking at the picture to the left, the shorter, um, line on the left is where the fence is, correct?
I can point it out.
That's why I pointed out.
You don't, you don't point, yeah. I have a cursor here, I can do this. Yeah, I'll just sit down.
The fence is, no, it doesn't go that far. It starts, go back, go back, back. It starts about right there and it goes to, no, not that far. About right there.
Okay, so you just have to get it from the microphone.
And then, uh.
Yeah, I just have to get it.
Yes.
So the fence goes from approximately, and we have some aerials, uh, or photos, but on this line, approximately where the cursor is, not all the way to the end, but somewhere over here.
It, it passes the garage a bit, okay, it goes further down than the garage. Bring the cursor down. Okay, to about right there.
And then it's go over here?
And then this is, this is the, uh, my side garden here.
Okay, that's your side.
I have like a, uh, side garden that, that borders with the school. And there's a little piece of lattice that runs on the, um, southern wall, about five feet of there. And the reason I did this with the lattice is because there was lattice already there on that portion, on that southerly portion, because some years ago, someone planted a bunch of rose bushes and they grew up and they put a lattice there and it, uh, created like a wall between the school and, and five oh seven Sewell. So when the house at, uh, with the, the school and seven oh five Grant, when the house at five oh seven Sewell was built and I started to have this privacy issue and, um, light issue. So it's a privacy issue by day. At night, it's a, an adverse impact of light. So I thought, oh, well, there's this trellis here with these roses. Maybe I should just extend it and make a wall of roses along the border of five oh seven Sewell and seven oh five Grant.
Mr. Fior, did, did you consider talking to your neighbor and asking them to modify their light spillage onto your property?
Uh, no, I didn't. And I, I'm not here to ask someone to turn their lights off.
I didn't say turn their lights off.
Okay.
I said to modify the spillage of their light onto your property.
No, no, I haven't. Uh, but you, you, you must take into account that the biggest portion of this light is coming out of the Juliet balcony.
Again, I asked the same question.
No, I, no, I didn't. The problem is not just light, though. It's, it's an unusual, uh, closeness. When there's, when they stand in the balcony.
But you, they have a right not to, uh, you- You have a right to request the lack of spillage onto your property, is what I'm trying to tell you, Mr. Fier. You could have had them modify their lighting.
Well, I did speak to Mrs.--
Bernie?
No, not Mrs.--
No.
Who's the zoning officer?
Oh, Ms. Alonso.
I spoke to Ms. Alonso about the problem, and she said she would speak to them.
I can't go on hearsay. I'm saying, did you do this?
No, I did not.
Okay. There is an avenue for you to take.
Can I? This came up because of a violation? You were noticed for a violation of the fence?
Yes, yes.
Do you have any idea how that came about?
I don't know. I have no idea. I think it, I don't want to get into hearsay, but I can, they put in a pool. And I think during their inspection, the inspector spotted that, or somebody complained about it.
Well, I like to do, maybe if we can go into all the pictures--
Because it was there for a year, and then all of a sudden, I got the violation.
Excuse me. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, will you put this extension on top of your fence? Did the city know about it?
No, the city did not know.
You didn't have construction permits, no inspection or anything?
Not on the lattice, just on the fence.
So you were already in violation?
Hmm? I know, I understand it's a violation. I'm not contesting that it's a violation. I'm here asking for a design waiver.
That is why we're here, because he did not notice the town by putting the last, he got a violation, and he needs to seek a variance or design exception. So that is the situation which leads us to here.
Yeah, but what we have here--
Can we look at the pictures?
What we have here, two issues that could have taken place. One by simply talking to your neighbor.
Say what?
Okay, we have two issues that could have been solved before you got here. One, by simply talking to your neighbor, which means that the city would definitely, hopefully, come in and help you out with the type of lighting on the house next door. And the fact that you built a structure there that the city didn't approve of.
Yes.
You did two wrong things, and now you're asking us to pick one--
Well, listen, I don't, I agree that the, that putting it up was wrong. Not talking to my neighbor about it, I really don't get along with them that well. And that was my choice. If, you know, I--
They're way out here. I think they should be required to just stick to the proofs that they would need to submit and then carry the day for a design session.
Right, and I'd just like, I'd like to just go over the pictures, maybe. You'll show all the angles, the privacy angles, so we can look at the whole slideshow.
Look at it.
Hold on, and maybe that will give the board a better context of that, and then maybe we can ask questions from there. Because it's not just a light, it's a privacy issue too. So the board, if the board may, I'd just like to go through--
As I understand it, even if the light was changed, if the room that has the Juliet balcony was covered at night, the light problem may go away, but the privacy problem does not go away.
Correct, correct.
And the, the distance between that Juliet balcony and your fence line, your property on, do you know how much that is?
Well, I think if we show the pictures, we can get a better sense--
I looked at the pictures, but I--
I don't--
Do you have measurement? Do you have dimensions?
I could probably give you the dimension. Okay, because I, I couldn't really completely tell from the pictures, at least that were in the application.
Okay.
Go with the slideshow. I'm going to have to calculate it.
So let's just go with, so the fence is, so the fence is along there, it doesn't abut a street or anything, it's just between your neighbor, correct?
Between my neighbor and--
The fence, the fence is between you and 507 Sewell. The lattice on top is not close to any street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's just go through the pictures. So as far as the height of the fence, the height of the lattice on top, this is a measurement. This is a picture you took, correct? Oops, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm just trying. All right. It's, I'm trying to zoom it without going through my screen. There we go. All right. So the height of that, 31 inches, or just over 31 inches, is that accurate as to the height of the lattice?
Yes.
Okay. And then pictures of the lattice. So this is facing the fence. Describe this picture.
Well, as I was pointing out to you on the other photograph, the greatest portion of this lattice is facing that garage. And nobody sees it other than myself and the people at 507 Sewell.
And we show--
It's in the intersection of the inside of three lots away from Asbury Avenue, Sewell Avenue, and Grand Avenue.
And we show this picture here, number three, this is the accurate depiction of what it looks like from the neighbor's property, correct?
Yes.
Which neighbor?
It's 507--
The 507 Sewell to the--
But that is much further back than that looks like. That's about 30 feet into their driveway.
Okay.
That was my, that was why I asked--
Yeah, it's, that's, there's another shot that shows it more accurately from Sewell.
Oh, I--
Can you go, can you go back to the previous one?
So I have this picture which shows--
No, sorry, go back to the, go back to the previous one.
Is that the one, the tape measure or--
No, no, it just showed the garage. Yep.
Oh.
So the spillage of light, is it coming from the garage, or is it coming from the house?
The house.
I can show you--
There's no lights on the garage.
We're getting to that.
I can show you those.
We're getting to that.
So-- This is one of the pictures that shows the spillage of light.
Zoom back a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a few of these pictures, so this is, describe this picture.
Is that picture in our pocket?
No.
No.
These are exhibits I'm presenting to the board today.
So that's the garage that's shown?
No, that's the house.
You're seeing the house there.
You just have to testify, so describe what, describe what that picture is.
Is this light coming off the Juliet balcony, or no? Someone else?
Well, the lights, the spots are outdoor lighting, and the Juliet balcony is the square right here.
That, that's blocked by--
There.
By the lattice, right.
That's the Juliet--
You don't have any, you don't have any pictures of that Juliet balcony without the lattice, right? You do.
Without the lattice?
Yes.
Before--
Before you put it up.
Pictures before. I didn't take pictures before.
Not when it was still annoying you? You didn't take pictures when it was annoying you?
So--
Just so we can see, you might, I mean--
No, I didn't take pictures.
So, and these are a few more I can show that are similar. And this picture, where is that light coming from on the bottom, right?
That is coming from, I'm really not sure.
Where is this light?
Yes, I'm not sure where that light's coming from.
And these are--
Those are his lighting.
Your lights.
Those are my, that's, that's low voltage lighting on the fence.
And then some other pictures--
I mean--
Show, just, let's go through the pictures. So this, what's this picture of?
This is the picture of the Juliet balcony, and--
Where is the Juliet balcony?
Right there.
You can just see the railing at the top of the fence.
Okay.
I can zoom that a little.
So you're saying the light from the, the light inside the room is spilling?
Yeah, it's, it's quite, it's quite bright. It lights up my whole backyard.
So it's not just the outdoor lights, it's the light, interior lights in the room?
So interior light is bothering you?
But it's the interior and the exterior lights combined, both of them. Some of those spots--
I don't see any--
No, but in the other shot, there was. You look, you look at the other shot, do you see the exterior light there? That's an exterior light coming through.
But that doesn't appear to be coming from inside the house.
No, not that one.
These are inside, and also--
This is an exterior light here.
Right, but, but you're complaining about the interior light of the Juliet--
Combined, it's quite bright.
So that light right there that you pointed to, where is that on your neighbor's house?
This light?
Yes, yes.
I would say that might be--
It's under the second bank of windows, between the first and the second floors.
And is it a, do you know if it's a spotlight?
Under and over?
Looking at that picture--
Something?
So there's the double window, the Juliet balcony, right? And then to the right, there's another set of windows.
So do you know if that's a spotlight? Or is that a--
It's like a security light.
So let me just ask you a question. In addition to the light, is there, by not having this trellis, is that a privacy concern for you by having this balcony out here? In addition to any light issues, you have a privacy issue?
Yes, it is.
What's your issue, outstanding the light? What's your issue with the balcony right there?
Well, it's, you know, look, I have a very small space there. It's, the building is commercial, it's almost full lot coverage. I've got about a five-foot yard. Okay? And when I'm standing there--
Hold on, just a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, and do you have windows on the side of this house? Is it just a concern when you're in the backyard, or is it a concern when you're inside your house?
No, it's not a concern when I'm on the inside.
It's just a, you're just, your privacy--
It's, in the, in the summer, in the summertime, when I'm sitting out there, or having someone over, I, I feel uncomfortable. I feel like I'm on a, I'm, like there's a watchtower there.
Because you, you lived in this house from 2013 without a neighbor, and then the neighbor came in in 2012, I mean, 2020, and everything changed. You know, that's how most of us live, pal, ever in Asbury. We have neighbors that can see into our backyards from their house.
Sir, I've been a real estate agent in Hoboken in Jersey City for 25 years. I've, it's, I think we can agree, that's a very densely populated area of New Jersey. I have an encyclopedic knowledge of the condo buildings in Hoboken and Jersey City. I've never seen anything that's any worse egregiously in terms of environmental impact from one property to another than this.
Are you, was that house built to code? Was it built--
Yeah, I'm assuming it is.
It got, it got all of its approval.
I'm not complaining about what they did. I'm just complaining, my complaint is the impact, the adverse impact it's had on me. And I built the trellis to regain some sense of privacy.
I get that, I understand. You have, you have the unusual property here, where you have very limited outdoor space, and you have, you know, basically a sliver that you prize as your private space. And unfortunately, your neighbor was lawfully able to build that home. And it, that's just what happens in an urban densely populated area that is going through urban reasons. So, I mean, I get it, I get it, I get it. If, if that, if your neighbor's, you know, having some, some light pollution that's coming into your property, that's another topic. But if it's just normal light coming from their bedroom and from their backyard, I don't know that--
You know what, they're here.
Wait, 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 no, no, no.
Does it bother them?
So you can't--
No, no, just you right now.
They're going to ask you a question.
Okay.
And then you'll respond, they'll have an opportunity to speak, and we'll conduct this--
The sooner the better.
We'll conduct this.
You're, you're not the first person to complain about privacy issues, Mr. Fier. We all have the same complaints about privacy issues. As my colleague says, it has to do with living in a densely packed, small, little town of Asbury Park. It's part of the whole genre, the whole issue of living side by side, as close as we are to our neighbors. So you're not the first to complain about this issue. But if you're talking about interior lighting that's spilling onto your property, I'm not sure that's a valid argument for us. As for the possibility of these lights that are shining directly through your lattice, as you showed us, that could be modified by your neighbor. I, I'm a little bit hesitant to say you, as in terms of the Juliet balcony, that it's a privacy issue for you, only because unless they're hanging out their window, and, which they can't really put a chair there to overlook your property, that's the only privacy issue you have, is if they're really stretching their neck to look out over your property. Because a Juliet balcony is, is just a door, and it opens up to allow it some air. It's not a privacy situation for the most part. So I'm a little bit hesitant to agree with you on these counts.
I would raise, I would look at it a little bit differently, in that this house is a unique house in the area in terms of its height. Okay, these are multiple--
But this wasn't a house--
No, 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 no. The yard is what it is, the limited space is, the whole thing, in a way, when you look at the entire property, it sits lower. The area where this, the fence and the lattice is, is so far removed from the public eye that it would seem that this board easily has the discretion to bring this design exception to address this specific and somewhat unusual situation. And I'm just saying that I feel, and this is just my opinion, that it's presented in a way that this could solve that very, very easily, without getting into neighbor relations, without getting into all sorts of other technical things. It's a minor design exception that we have the power to approve if we, if we so choose. So I would be inclined towards that. Let me just, let's move this thing forward.
Can we see more of the pictures?
Yes.
Mr. Fier, I just, I just want to confirm, though, that I understand your building, your house, sorry, your house is unique in regards that it's one-story. What you're saying, and I believe my colleague asked you, the, let's call it the light pollution, doesn't bother you when you're in your house? So, so the, the design of your house, the style of your house, is not relevant to your argument tonight, correct? It's when you're in your backyard, and everybody's backyard is--
No, I disagree with you, sir.
I thought that's--
I, I disagree that it's not relevant when I'm not in, I, I, I believe that the house is a totality, and it has its own, it should have its, the right to its own autonomy. It, it's been there for 100 years, and the neighborhood has changed around it. And so all I'm maintaining here is that the integrity of the property should be maintained. I don't feel that I or anyone else in the future should have to walk outside that back door and have that imposition so glaring at them. I think it takes away from my house. It, 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 I think it damages my property.
And you're talking the light, or you're talking the Juliet balcony?
The totality of my property has been altered in a negative way by this home. And I'm not complaining about their home, or their right to turn on their lights, or their right to their own privacy. or their right to their own privacy. I'm saying that I should also be able to maintain the integrity of my property, especially because it is an iconic property in this community.
I understand what you're saying, but my, I go back to the fact that there is an alternative, alternative for you if there is light spillage, light pollution onto your property. And that solves one of your issues from, and again, I can't see, all I can see is the light coming through the lattice. But if that light is an exterior light underneath two windows, which we're assuming a lot here, then that could probably be adjusted. And that's, that solves one of your issues.
One of them.
One of them. And there is, there is an avenue for you to do that that you haven't pursued.
But I'm also, I'm also addressing.
No, I just want to say, but to do that, I mean, I don't know if the neighbor, if they comply with the light ordinance, they don't have to do that. So if there's a situation where you try to resolve and they say, well, no, we aren't compliant, you know, we don't want to adjust our lights, then we just wind up back here.
But this board, this board is not an enforcement board when it comes to violations. There's other avenues to go and pursue that before you come to this board and ask for variance.
Well, again, this is.
And you can't say that, well, if we do that, we're go, we're basically just gonna be back here anyway. That's assuming that you've, it's assuming that you're not gonna get any remedies by pursuing the avenue that is in front of you, which is to go to the town. And if you have, or one, talk to your neighbor, if that doesn't work, go to the town and file a complaint regarding the lightning.
The application doesn't ask for the enforcement of a, of lighting. The application asks for a design exception.
The gentleman right there just said that if they went and they pursued the avenue of going to the town, that they might be back in the same position.
I think you missed the more important point.
I think you shouldn't argue with the board members, Wendy.
Which is, no, because I would like to move this forward. He's, I think he's talking about a privacy issue and I am talking about why we can't give a design exception for a small fence. That's right, but I am expressing my opinion.
We've heard your deliberation.
You haven't heard the case.
Right.
You're deliberating the case now without having heard all the evidence, without having heard the other witnesses.
You've already made a determination.
Don't hurt that. If you do that, then I'll switch gears. So why don't we finish the case?
Yes, please.
After you hear all the evidence, then you can deliberate and you can decide what you want to do.
All I'm asking is that we address this as a design exception request. That's right, and not be talking about light spillage. That's all I'm seeking.
Well, if the gentleman brings up light spillage, you as a board have a right to address the light spillage. He raises the issue, you respond. That's, but that's entirely up to the five of you. I suggest you finish the case and then you deliberate and you decide what you want to do.
Please proceed.
Right now, you're deliberating and you haven't heard, haven't gotten through half the photos.
Right.
And we haven't heard any other witnesses, witnesses, so that's all I want.
Thank you.
Why don't you proceed?
Yes, I'll proceed. So I'd like to just go over each of the photos separately. And Mr. Fur, you can just explain each photo. So the first one, obviously, we talked about the aerial photo, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, right?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And just describe what the second photo, I think we marked as A1 also overlaps.
That photo's irrelevant to the application.
Okay, now I'll switch. I didn't want to miss a photo, okay.
There you go.
Can you describe this photo, please? Again, for the board, what does this photo depict?
That's the fence which begins at the cross-section of 701 Grand, 705 Grand, and 507 Soul and runs to the back of the lot where it meets 707 Grand.
So where we're looking from, this vantage point, this is on 507 Soul Avenue, correct? Looking at the fence. We, right now, we're looking from 507 Soul.
Into, into that property, yes.
This is your property back here, correct?
Yes.
The square one, okay. And then your trellis goes from down a little further past the building line and it comes down here a little bit, correct?
Yes.
And then, we always spoke about this picture with the height, correct? And.
So what's the total height, Mr. Fur?
The total, six-foot fence and 31 inches on top of the trellis. So that's eight feet, seven inches? Eight feet, seven inches, right? Eight, seven. Eight feet, seven inches total on top of the lot. Right, and this picture again, I know we talked about it. This is looking towards the north, correct? On the fences?
That is the, all the way back is where 707 Grand, 705 Grand, and 507 Soul touch. It's the interior cross-section of those three lots.
And this, is this the garage on 507 Soul Avenue?
There's no spillage from that angle, sir.
I'm sorry?
There's no light spillage from that angle?
Not from that angle, no. The reason I carried it down, okay.
He didn't ask you that.
Yeah, let me, let me just.
Answer the question. Don't, don't, don't go beyond the question.
Okay.
You'll do yourself a favor if you'll only answer the questions.
And in this next picture, describe, this is looking from the other direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this goes down the line to this corner here, correct? And this, we'll have clearer pictures, but just for purposes, if this is the house on 507 Soul Avenue? And this is facing south, correct?
Yes.
And this next picture. And describe, is this a corner of that area facing south?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the house on 507 Soul, correct?
Yes.
All right, and this is a daytime picture of that angle. And the next one, that's another picture just looking a little back further? The same thing. And again, these pictures, is this just another vantage point of looking south?
Different angle.
Different angle.
Same, same substance.
Right.
Okay.
And then this one also is looking south but a little closer to show the, that blows up the terrace a little more, right? This is a closer picture of the fence?
That's, that's what it looks like when you're standing in my backyard space.
Okay. And this next one is just another angle, same picture, a little further back, correct?
Yes.
Same thing, a little closer picture, okay. And again, same picture, right, different angle? And same thing, just a little bit, okay. And this picture, let's describe this one, I'll blow it up a little bit. So what is this vantage point?
So this vantage point shows the interior cross-section of basically four lots. It's the interior section of the block. So you have the house on Asbury Avenue. You have the house at 707 Grand. My house, this, and 507 Soul. Four properties, that's the interior section of four properties.
And this picture is taken from the sidewalk, is that accurate?
Of Soul Avenue.
Soul Avenue, so this shows the distance between where the fence is in relation to Soul Avenue, correct?
Yes.
And it's, you would say it's well over 25 feet? Is that a fair approximation between your trellis and all the way to the street?
I'd say about 35 feet.
And these pictures, I think we showed them before, but just to confirm, these were all the night pictures. I'll just go through them because we already testified. These pictures are going through 17 through 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. Those are all the pictures that you testified previously of how it looks at night from the south angle facing 507 Soul, is that correct?
Yes. And just want to point out, you're seeing, without that, without that trellis there, it's quite devastating.
Okay, we're gonna go to the hardships in a second. I just wanted to go through the pictures. And so that trellis is blocking, fair to say, part of the windows, the Juliette balcony.
It's filtering the light, it's filtering the light, it's diffusing the light.
It's also giving some type of buffer in addition to the light between the windows and the balcony as well?
That's correct.
And then this last picture, just describe this picture.
This is the side garden.
And this is your garden?
Yes.
And then we're facing, those, the trellis is towards the back?
Yes.
Okay, so those are all the pictures, correct? We went through all the pictures?
I believe so.
Okay, so let me just ask you some questions now we went over the pictures. So can you just describe, and I know we've been through this, but for the record, I just want to put all the issues. What is your hardship or peculiar site condition that you have that has caused you to put up this trellis on top of the fence? Tell me all the things that you, by not having this trellis, what hardship would you endure by not having this trellis on top of the fence area?
Well, I feel like I've got a watchtower right, right above me. Very, very close. It's very imposing. It's not subtle at all. I understand that the house is conforming, but it's definitely had an adverse impact on my home. And I, I really believe that it may have even a financial impact, knowing how people react when they see the. It may be irrelevant, but.
Don't answer, don't, don't even, you're speculating. Do not answer the question.
So my question is not appraisal, market value. I'm talking about physical hardships. You said watchtower, you said privacy, you said light spillage onto your property. Just go through again, all those specific hardships that you've had to endure that caused, that caused you to put up this two-and-a-half-foot trellis.
I'm, I'm, I don't feel comfortable back there.
And why don't you feel comfortable back there? Go through your reasons.
Because someone is very, very close. And when they turn their lights on, it alters my whole backyard.
Is there any other reasons besides what you've testified here to today, so we can all your testimony? Any other reasons of hardship besides the watchtower, the privacy, the light, and just being uncomfortable with being close? Are those all the reasons that you think this is a hardship?
Those are the reasons.
Okay, and before this application, you put the fence, the trellis up in September 2024, August, I think you said August 2024, correct? Before this application was filed here, did you ever get a complaint from the neighbor about the trellis being put up at any time?
Never.
And the first time you've heard from the neighbor, I guess, is when the neighbor, from this application today, correct?
I've never heard from the neighbor.
Okay, never heard, not, but the neighbor is here present. Do you have anything else you would like to add to your application at all in summary?
I would just like to add that I didn't want to put that trellis up. It was not my intention to do that. I was happy with the six-foot fence. Putting the trellis up actually creates less light. I would prefer that the trellis was not there. But when I have to consider what is worse? The lack of light or the invasiveness that I feel has been created by the position of this home and where that balcony has been placed, I'd rather have, I'd rather feel a little more secure and a little more private. It's not like I have total privacy from the trellis. The trellis hasn't given me what I had before, but it's definitely ameliorated a negative environmental situation.
And I'm sorry, just one more question, I want to go. What is the peculiar site condition on your property? Or peculiar about your property as opposed to the neighbors that, that created this issue that caused you to put up the trellis? What is peculiar about, what is different about your property?
Well, my property is lower than all of these houses around me. I'm a commercial building.
No, you're not a commercial building. You're a residential building. The existing building.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The existing building is old. It takes up a substantial amount of your lot area. It's configured so you only have a very, very tiny rear yard, slightly larger side yard in order to have outside enjoyment of your property. But the use of your building is a residential building. You live there, you don't have a business there, right? You're not Edward's Beauty Salon.
No, but the person that I bought it from was using it as a commercial building.
Okay, but you've been there for more than 10 years.
I can rephrase this, I can rephrase the question.
No, no, I just gave you your testimony. You have an unusual configuration of building to lot area. The lot is slightly undersized, so you are constrained.
Right.
You can't change your neighbor's house. You can't change your neighbor's property. Those are not under your control. Your neighbor has a conforming house, which I did the final inspection on, so I know it's conforming.
I'd like to ask a question. You have any ability to plant trees along that back fence line or no?
No.
Well, he only has like five feet from the fence to the back of the house. Again, to clarify, he has a very narrow space behind the building to the fence, which is the property's. A slightly wider space, but yeah, it's only about five feet.
There's space on the other side, the neighboring property, to plant something larger and bigger.
On which one?
I know that.
Well, there are, there are plantings next to the garage on this property's property.
There are.
Yeah.
So you're saying the invasiveness of your property or your, your privacy is only coming from one house? We talked about four different pieces of property.
It only affects one house.
One house affects that, okay?
That's it.
That's it, okay?
The, it doesn't, it has no impact on the house on Asbury Avenue or the house north of me on Grand or the Alphabet School to the south of me. It's, the only impact is with this house and most of this is facing the garage.
Okay.
Over half of that lattice is running against a garage.
But that is their house.
It's their garage.
And the other two people, the other two properties, that's their property, right? Out of the four pieces of property, everyone has rights.
Yes, of course.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, not only am I trying, sitting here and trying to respect your rights, as a member of this board, I'm required to respect the rights of everyone. That is why you send out letters to people and say, please come to this hearing so that we have to respect their rights also. Okay, so I hate to put it to you like this, but what I feel, there's a whole thing called buyer beware. You knew what you were buying, okay?
That's not, that's not accurate.
No, it may not be accurate, okay, but you bought the house, just let me finish. When you bought the house, you didn't expect to have light pollution coming to you, am I right? When you bought the house, you didn't expect to have light pollution coming to your yard. Am I right?
Well, honestly, I didn't expect what I got. If that's your question, I didn't expect that, no.
You didn't expect what you got. Maybe buyer beware is something that, you know, upset somebody.
Well, buyer beware would mean I would have seen it and known, but I didn't.
But that's the wrong statement, but...
It was an empty lot.
What you expected, you haven't gotten. But due to the expansion of people's property in a rapidly growing area,
Yes.
that is something that may happen.
Right. And so, sorry. This is, this circumstance, this case, is a response to that new development, which they're completely allowed to do. But yes, it has this effect on his quality of life where the windows on that house face, you know, his area of enjoyment outside his house. And so he, again, not getting a permit, didn't approach the city about making this corrective action to satisfy part of that problem.
Which I do apologize for.
Right. He did what he thought would be effective at reducing the light glare, the daytime viewing of his private space in his yard. His yard, again, he only has this little space. He's only a one-story house. His windows don't, you know, have an impact on the new house. So that's like literally the trigger for this. If he hadn't built it first and he had come and said, hey, zoning office, the view from this house, the people watching me in my backyard, the light, it's a little too much, can I make my fence higher? And they say, no. Not unless you get a design exception. He would be here saying, I want to put this up because these windows are looking into my backyard and at night, even the lights inside the house create glare on my property. So if I put up this screening, it'll help reduce that. And based on everything they've said today about the location of his house, the location of the fence, how much yard area he has, those are actually the proofs to satisfy that request. So his one failure was doing it without a permit or getting any kind of input from the zoning office first and just go ahead and doing it. Especially when he knew, you need a permit for a fence. But that's why he's here. Michelle said, you know, I get you did it. We're resolving that separately in municipal court, but you have this other avenue. Go to the zoning board and plead your case. Show your proofs. See if your neighbors will come out and support.
Right. Wait, hold on. Hold on. We have to finish with Mr. Fior first.
So I think that's where we are. And it would be very interesting if there are any public questions for the testimony that's happened.
Do you want to run this meeting, Donna?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I think it's your turn now just to remain silent. Remain silent, Donna. Remain silent. We've heard what you had to say.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Fior. We've heard your testimony.
I'm sorry, I have no further questions. Just, probably, thank you.
I thought you were done, right?
I'm done.
Okay. So we've heard your testimony, Mr. Fior.
Okay.
At this point, does anybody else have any questions further for Mr. Fior? Donna, do you have any more questions for Mr. Fior? Oh, Dan?
Okay, all your lights basically, from what I see, are below the trellis of your fence and shine into your yard, right?
I'm just having a little difficulty hearing you.
All your lights that you have in the back are below six feet. Am I correct about that?
My lights?
His lights?
Well, yeah, the light on the fence.
That's his light?
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, all of them are below six feet.
Those are all like two volts.
I mean, both asked that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, how many on the...
How many?
Yes, sir. I see two.
Three.
Three. Okay, so you have made an attempt to just keep your lighting on your side of the fence?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Fior? All right. Donna, you're done? Okay, so we'll open it up for the public questioning of Mr. Fior. And please direct your questions regarding his testimony only.
Okay.
Any comments?
Okay, no questions? All right.
All right.
So we'll open it up for public comment now. No, no.
No, no.
No.
Oh, no, do that. Go to the microphone first. Let's get you sworn in.
Four minutes. You get four minutes for your comment.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Marilyn Bernie, B E R N E Y.
And I know you're on list of property owners because I looked at that. Where do you live?
507 Sewell Avenue. We are the new building question.
Okay, you're up. Now you're up.
May I hand in these pictures, please?
Well, first you gotta, as you're bringing them to me, you gotta tell me what they are.
Did you swear her in?
Yes.
Oh.
And we have to make sure that it's on the record. Okay.
Okay, I just...
I'm gonna show you this first photo.
That is, that is another angle of the fence with the trellis on top. You can see it stops short from the back of the property.
Now, which side of the fence are you on, on this photo?
I am, I am facing the fence from my driveway.
Oh, you're on your side?
Yes, I am on the westerly side.
Okay. That's one.
They're all similar angle.
Okay, and this, I'll do this. This must be on the record. Just go back to the record.
Do you want to?
I'm here, the only one who can see it.
All right, let me, and then I'll bring them up. Okay. That was one of the photographs.
This photo is the angle from the northwest corner of our property looking towards Sewell Avenue. This is the opposite angle. We are standing about twenty-some-odd feet into our driveway, looking, looking north.
All right, and these are all on your property, right?
Correct.
And this?
This is just showing that the lower part of the fence is splintering below the trellis.
All four photographs. You have any objection to the...
Can I see him?
I hope you're not going to limit me to four minutes based on this.
I don't have objections to your introduction.
Okay. All four of these photographs were taken from her side of the property looking at the fence. There are various angles from different points of the property. This one shows the garage area. This one is the last one that she identified, the witness identified, that shows the splitting of the horizontal beams, or horizontal beam. This is another angle, believing windows on that side of the property. And this is on her, she's looking over. And, yeah, we're gonna have everybody pass them down so everybody can see it. Okay? And this is another angle. You can see, the anchor in all of these seems to be this covered grill or whatever.
Covered bicycle.
Bicycle, okay. Okay, I'm gonna make sure everybody gets a chance to look.
I want to start with a statement that's gonna surprise everyone up there.
Can you speak louder, please?
I want to start with a statement that is going to surprise everyone up there. We do not oppose this lattice. We have zero interest in seeing Mr. Fior's side of the property. We do not stand up at our Juliet balcony peering over the buildings that surround us. We are very busy people. In fact, the lights don't go on in that room till 10 o'clock each night when we go upstairs, and we are asleep by 10:45. We have blinds now on the window. They're not room darkening blinds, but they're blinds. We do have motion sensors in the backyard for security. We do not keep our backyard lights on all night long. We do not wish that Mr. Fior does not have privacy. However, what we do not understand is why he stopped two panels short on that fence, as you can see in those pictures that I just gave you. It almost makes us feel that he goes to the corner to look in to see what we're doing. We have bad blood between us. I could give you the whole story, but it's not worth it and it's not relevant. All we want is to live in peace. We built a beautiful, conforming home that we went through a lot of hoops to build. We were denied at this board the first time, so we changed our plan. The first plan centered everything on the lot so that we had a lot of room on each side. It would have been better for all the neighbors. It was denied because it hadn't attached garage, similar to the previous application. It was even five-foot setback, but it was denied. So we went to Plan B. We put a detached one-car garage, which conforms to the rest of Asbury, on the back corner of the lot with the proper setbacks. We left a lot of yard in the back, and we pushed our house to the west to leave room for a driveway. But the only thing we ask is that if he's going to keep the lattice up, he finishes it towards the northwest edge of the property and that he maintains the fence so it stops splintering. That's it. And my husband may have something else to say as well, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We don't wish anyone ill will. We want everyone to live in peace. We're here full-time as residents. Our family comes down, our friends come down. We're not late-night partiers. I mean, I have to say, this neighborhood could have gotten a duplex rental with lots of just post-college grad kids who party all night long. We have some of those neighbors. We wish them well, too. We're not them. We're in bed by 10:45. So things could be a lot worse, so be careful what you wish for.
Wait, you're not done?
No.
You want to ask any questions?
No.
Anyone on the board?
No.
Yeah, I do. It's spoken about bad blood.
Yes.
That's not relevant to what we're talking about, but you have no problem with the trellis. The only thing you wish it would be closed off.
Correct. If he wants a trellis, God bless.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Sandra, please raise your right hand. You saw me swear a term, testimony about to be given, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Michael Bernie.
And your address?
507 Sewell.
Floor is yours.
Excuse me?
The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. So first, a question came up, how this all came about. And the way it came about was shortly after the trellis was installed, I don't know the exact date, but we were getting inspections left and right, conforming to everything, and I was told to take down the trellis. At that point, I had to say, it wasn't my fence. You guys got to do what you got to do, but it's not me. So that's how it came about. I also want to say I agree with everything my wife said, of course. As far as the, as for the board, I don't know how you guys sleep at night allowing us to have a light in our bedroom. Shame on you guys. But we have no issue with the trellis. If you want to grant the applicant two additional feet to make it 10 feet, I'm all for it. Like my wife said, we have no interest whatsoever in looking at Mr. Fior. It's so not on our radar that we don't really care what he does. I thought it was very interesting bringing up the fact that he's actually so fortunate to have this type of structure. Normally, a residential structure will allow 30 to 40 feet in the back, allowing a lot more buffer space between his back door and our bedroom window. But because that building is almost 100% lot coverage, we have to be close together. And further, this is Asbury Park, and I'd like Mr. Fior and Dick Soria to hear this. It's the city by the sea. It's the city by the sea. It's not Tewksbury. It's not Basking Ridge, where we each have five acres. I open my door at night. The bright light from the Hope's Charter School is blaring at me. I look to the east. The school, the alphabet school, has lights on all night. I look at Mr. Fiori's house occasionally because he has a glaring green, pink, and purple light in his backyard. I look at 707 Grand. My friend Donald, he's got a third-floor back light that goes on. I could see it from my bedroom. I look to the west. We got two renters next door. There's always lights on. But you know what? God bless them. Everyone's got to live and everyone's got to enjoy life. So once again, you know, we have no objection. We strongly urge the board to pass this variance and allow the trellis. So I want to go on record as saying, we do not oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless you have further questions?
Listen, what? Who told you to take the trellis down?
I don't, well, we had so many inspections, I can't recall. But I was told, is that your trellis? I remember the conversation. I don't remember who it was. Is that your trellis? I said, no, that's not my trellis. That's not my fence. So it was a very short conversation. I don't know who it was. I don't... Was during the inspection phases of your house? Yes, we had so many people coming and going. I don't remember which one it was. Thank you. I have no questions.
May I explain why I didn't finish it?
No.
Did you bring it all the way down?
No.
Please.
No, no. Okay. Is that it? Anyone else in the public?
Anybody else in the public? Any questions for Mr. Fior's testimony? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Thank you.
It's on the motion. Move, Christopher. You move that, goes to closed public session. Second, please.
Second.
All in favor? Any votes? Isaac. Okay. Do you want to...
Yeah, briefly, I think, because so, you know, we, myself and my client, we do have a history with the Bernys and other applications. And I actually, although you can see that there's some bad blood, I do appreciate them coming up. I do appreciate the support for the application. And I think this just create interesting, unusual scenario where not only we have a design exception we're requesting from the board, but this is also helpful to the neighbor as they stated they didn't object to it. This is a great way, I think, just to make peace, create privacy of a difficult situation, of a peculiar circumstance. And if there's anything we need to do to complete that, I will talk to my client, see if he's agreeable with that. But I would kindly request, especially based upon the public comment in favor of the application and all the reasons why this is a peculiar circumstance, a hardship, that I think it's just best to create peace between the neighbors. It doesn't push this and prolong this into other negotiations, which neither of the parties want. They just want to be left alone. This trellis solves it. It's away from the street. It's a design exception. It's going to allow everyone to move forward. So we just respectfully request that the application be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scourge.
Thank you.
All right.
Before you deliberate, let me give you a quick, let me give you the law, and then you can apply the facts to the law, okay? Design exception, unlike a variance, only requires the positive criteria, not the negative. Okay, so here's the essence of it. It says, if the little enforcement, the board can grant it, either planning or zoning, in the appropriate circumstances. If the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is impractical or will exact an undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the landing question. If you are satisfied that there are peculiar conditions relating to the landing question, actually both properties that relate to this, the criteria has been met, you can grant it. If you're not satisfied, you will regret it. It's that straightforward. The rest is up to you.
Thank you, Ted. So our chance to deliberate.
I think you're a very lucky man that your neighbors, that you have bad blood showed up tonight to support you. You're a very lucky man.
I thank them.
You can't say it.
Just listen, just listen. Just listen, just listen. I do believe, I do believe that this is a particular situation. And due to the fact that it is out of public view, it really is not impacting anyone other than these two families. I, I would be concerned what would happen if we required them to remove the trellis. So I would actually vote for, to complete the trellis, try to keep some peace between these people. And hopefully we can all learn from this situation.
Oh, and I, I want to follow up on my colleagues. I, I too thank the, the Bernies for showing up and helping us deliberate in a positive manner for you, Mr. Fior. I think, you know, I agree with Russell, you're very lucky that they came. And hopefully that will waylay some of the bad blood between you and your neighbors. And I also agree with Russell, maybe you should think about completing the trellis. I, I, I don't know that that could be a condition.
Well, we can make this. Any lawyers?
Um, I'm, I'm, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just want to say one thing. There is a condenser there in the way.
That, that is the reason I didn't finish it.
I, 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 hold on. I mean, I, I don't know if the applicant is able to complete or not. I didn't realize that he didn't finish it because the condenser was in the way of that. I don't know if it's, if it's possible, I guess I'll, I'll try to do it if possible.
But isn't there already a six-foot fence there anyway, Mr. Scree? So, uh, how is it?
The heating, cooling people told me, this is why I didn't finish it. The heating, cooling people said, when the hot air is blowing out of that, it needs to escape. If it pushes back towards the condenser, it creates a problem. The six-foot fence is, you know, it, it has, I didn't put it because I thought it created like a tunnel back there for that air to just keep circulating. But if they want me to put, finish it, I will comply, I will comply with that. But I didn't do it for any other reason.
I can't say, can we have the engineer look at this?
So no words, the answer is yes.
What's that?
Then you'll finish.
I will finish it.
Okay. Got it. We're good while we're ahead, they got yes on the finishing.
I, I echo what my other two colleagues said. And I appreciate that the neighbors have come here today. I think that shows that the method criteria is being positive, not only for you, but for, but for the neighborhood, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the famous words of Rodney King, can't we just get along? What I see here is, Mr. Fior, these people are angels, okay? They are angels. Okay, I have lived in Asbury all my life and I'm 74 years old. I see people coming, go, okay, they are angels. All right, I have people next to me, they're like, say, oh, I'm like, you know what, I don't care. Okay, they got to pay their electric bill. All right, they have already put shades up, okay? And I think that privacy is in the eyes of you, hold it. If I'm looking into you, if you see me violating your privacy, you have a right to speak. But I have heard nothing with these people who violated your privacy other than they have a light in their backyard. But the trellis is going to solve the problem. Let's solve the problem. They don't have a problem with it. You want to finish it, but next time you do some work, I will advise you go to the city first and make sure it's approved before you take that narrative of, oh, I'm doing this just because, just because it's the reason why you're here. Okay? Thank you. Wendy, you have anything?
I don't, I don't think I need to repeat myself.
Okay.
I felt early on.
I know.
Your trial, your design exception.
Okay, so we got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, what is it, 705 Grand Avenue's application.
With the, suggestion and the acceptance by the applicant that they will complete the trellis.
Yes. Agreed.
Correct?
Yes.
Say yes, please, all right?
Yes.
Yeah, head shake, can't be picked up.
Yes, I will finish.
I'll second.
Okay. John, and let's have a vote.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of this?
All in favor.
C I N.